Okay, so we are starting at five forty-one and this is policy committee. I guess we should date these nine fifteen twenty-five. Alright, so I would like to. I'm gonna try and run these side by side. I don't know any other easier way to do this with Google.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Word is a lot easier. Because they know that part of the problem is Caesar. No, it's not that. Okay. Let's see here. Good enough.
Nice.
Bummer.
You might be able to make it smaller if you want to zoom out.
Oh, you're right. Yeah, where's that?
So the hundred percent in the page that you're on up in the toolbar.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha.
You need to change that to. There you go.
That'll work. Okay.
I think those three dots. Oh, there you go. Oh, nice.
Perfect. Perfect. Okay, so twenty-two forty is our class size. Thirty-ten is about open enrollment. So you mentioned that.
Yes, so and actually, do you mind pulling up twenty-two forty, the draft?
Yeah.
Because we've already made some changes to it.
I believe that's what I did pull up.
No, you pulled up the current.
I did?
See, it says current.
Bummer.
So if we do the draft.
That's what I thought I pulled up. Sorry.
So there's a couple. Do you mind if I just sit up and point?
Please, please, please.
I'm a teacher at heart. I can't hold myself.
You can get you one of those laser pointers.
I know, I can't just, I can't just sit and point at this.
Okay.
Um, okay, so this, the recommendation that I made and emailed about was, if you scroll up just a touch, was ultimately that we would remove this language from when? All the way down to, I think, here, just this sentence. The reason why I'm proposing that we remove that language is it seems that the intent of both policies would remain true if that statement wasn't there. The intent of this policy, as I understand it, is that the district will strive for these class sizes, which are referenced in IDAPA. And that's what IDAPA asks us to do, is that we strive for these classes.
Correct, right.
Right now, the way that it's written, it contradicts what we have in here. Because it says that if we hit numbers over these, then it will constitute a hardship and we will not accept open enrollment above twenty-twenty, twenty-six, et cetera. But here, based on what was approved by the board in July of twenty-twenty-four,
Okay.
we've increased those numbers. So my proposal isn't that we change these numbers because Rusty and I, we feel strongly, we still want to strive to meet these.
Absolutely. Okay.
But we also need to give our administrators some clarity that, hey, in times like these where we need our ADA to be up, we might have a year where we do look at open enrollment, even if it's going to put us at twenty-one or twenty-two.
Okay.
Per this policy.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
It does. Okay, so that's what I wasn't fully. So let's see here, so.
And really, the spirit of my recommendation is just so that they don't contradict each other.
I gotcha.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, so, but, well, because, alright. Because here we're stating what a hardship is. Do we have this over here?
Let's see.
Let's read through open enrollment real quick. Alright, so this policy is adopted to allow all in district and out of district patrons to choose among the district schools under specified conditions and making a decision that students have an enrollment at the application shell or the district shall consider the needs of the student requesting a transfer as well as other students affected by the transfer and will accept students if capacity allows. Okay. So this is specific to just capacity. So what we're saying now is we're not going to have. Well.
At the bottom of thirty-ten, does it reference twenty-two forty? It does. Class size.
Yeah.
I mean, for the sake of the clarity that we're trying to provide, I wonder if it makes sense just to leave it at that? That it, you know, it becomes the burden of the superintendent or designee to make sure that we are not. Not accepting additional requests for open enrollment if it requires the hiring of additional staff. Causes overcrowding, causes an excessive number, et cetera. And the reason, I guess the reason why, in my mind, it it seems prudent to keep them separated is because those are all pretty subjective things. You like, like take A, for example, requires the hiring of additional staff. That seems like it would be cut and dry, but these things rarely come one at a time. They're, and so it's like, well, okay, so we hired an additional teacher at Lakeland Middle School and we did accept open enrollments, but we didn't necessarily need the additional teacher because of open enrollments. We needed it because enrollment was up, period. You know, and so we would have needed the extra teacher, but since we added them, now there's more capacity for open enrollment.
Okay.
And so it gets, it gets kind of murky.
Right, but the only thing I'm cautioned by is that if we remove all the language that talks about hardship, how can we claim one?
Well, and I'm not proposing that we remove any of it. I just think that it's, it's acceptable for it to stay only in twenty-two forty. So if, starting with right below where your cursor is, the enrollment of a student from another district.
Shall be deemed to constitute a hardship.
Yep, if the enrollment, and I, I think we include all of that. I think we just leave it there. So that way we have that. We can say, hey, in the situation where it's clear that we're overcrowding in a certain school, even though we're not violating our numbers in thirty-ten, we want to be able to claim that hardship.
Okay.
Because we're striving to meet those numbers when possible.
I want to see something, like, because I don't know where it is on there, so. Okay. Alright, so let's say we don't have any open enrollment. Say nobody wants to come to our district but our own students.
True.
How do we get to hardship?
You don't get to claim a hardship if you don't have open enrollment.
Okay.
Because it's our, that's, they have a right to faith that free appropriate public education. If they reside here, we don't get to claim hardship.
Okay, so no amount of enrollment constitutes a hardship for our own in district.
Correct.
Okay, so then why would we put any of this in this policy?
Because it. I see what you're saying.
That's where I'm getting hung up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that there's a benefit specifically to say.
But the numbers don't match what's on the open enrollment.
Right.
And see, I went to try and figure out how they came to those numbers originally. I don't remember.
Yeah. I think, I think the number of sections, I think the multiplier has just changed.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
So.
But I know they wanted them in.
I mean, I, I think, I think if you take that language out about the hardship, I don't think it hurts anything. Because again, I think the spirit of twenty-two forty is that we are striving to meet those class sizes.
I get you on that one.
Okay.
But I do want to make sure. Because. Well, I think it is said. I just need to make sure. So yeah, I mean, bottom line is we don't have space. Which, if we don't have space, that means that we would be required to hire additional staff. We would be required, I mean, we would, it would cause overcrowding. So I just wanted to make sure that hardship, but we're not calling it hardship over here.
Yeah, we're simplifying all of that hardship language into just our number threshold.
Correct.
Which I, if I think about it in terms of the historical context of how open enrollment has changed in Idaho, it makes sense that we're having this conversation because twenty-two forty precedes thirty-ten by so many years.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
It makes sense that hardship is no longer language that we really need to worry about. Because we have the class size thresholds for open enrollment.
Just so that it reads normally, we'll just take this out. We have our little thing in the Bob and then class sizes are reported to the board four times a year.
Yep.
And so then that, because I, I, if I recall, I think you headlined more than just this little guy out, but I don't remember.
Oh.
And that's where I was getting confused because I'm like, but how are we claiming a hardship? What are we, you know?
Got you.
But we, regardless of anything, if the person lives in district, whether we're making our class of twenty forty,
Yep.
you know, and we can't afford to hire a new teacher, then that's what we've got.
They have, right.
Right, okay, I get what you're saying. Okay. So then, these are done. Okay, so that'll work.
Great.
Go bigger, go bigger, go home. Alright. So we don't need that. Wait, okay. Let's read through this thirteen-hundred draft. And then we'll go from there. So the adoption of new policies and the revision and amending of existing policies shall be the sole responsibility of the Board of Trustees. In formulating policies, the Board shall adopt general principles which provide authority and responsibility for the superintendent and administrative staff to take action. The application of such policies to specific situations, personnel, and activities is the administrative detail to be performed by the superintendent and his staff.
Real quick, this thirty-ten P set to go to the board as well.
Good question.
I believe that was what was directed at the last policy committee meeting.
Yeah, but we pulled them, so I was just wanting, making sure that.
Yeah, I mean.
Were any updates to thirty-ten P even necessary?
I don't believe so.
I don't think they're, oh, good catch.
I'm not even sure if we did anything to thirty-ten.
Yeah, I don't know if we looked.
Oh, we updated the, yep.
Yeah, because we didn't necessarily read through any of it. It was just.
Just the numbers.
Yeah, well, because they, from the user end, if you're applying for an open enrollment here in Lakeland, that, that process hasn't changed at all. The procedure hasn't changed, just the numbers.
Yeah, it's just the numbers that would need to, and we would just want to make sure that they coincide with everything else.
With everything else. Okay.
Good, good catch, Sierra.
I wanted to make sure.
Okay. The staff, I guess. Our policies shall conform to local, state, federal laws as well as to the roles and regulations of the Idaho Department of Education. Proposed new policies and proposed changes in existing policies shall be presented in writing for reading and discussion at a regular or special board meeting. Such proposals may be referred to the superintendent for detailed study as needed prior to board action on the proposal. The board encourages the superintendent to contact other experts to have potential board policy researched. Interested parties, including any board member, citizen, or employee of the board, may submit views, present data, or arguments orally or in writing in support of or in opposition to proposed policy. Any written statements by a person relative to a proposed policy or amendment should be directed to the district clerk. Uh, that should be board clerk.
Any written statement by a person relative to a proposed policy or amendment should be directed to the board clerk prior to the second reading.
Yeah, because they'd be speaking in the.
Like a, like a public comment?
I would think so. Because the district doesn't have a clerk, number one. It's the board clerk. So.
Hey, there's no need to fight over me.
This is the only.
We just, we know the great job you do, Sierra. Everybody wants the support.
This is bothering me. Where is it? Thank you. Okay. Alright, so, alright. Because it's got hyperplasmed, we're just going to highlight it. And we'll continue reading and figure out why it's there. Proposed new policies and proposed changes in existing policies shall undergo a minimum of two readings in the following manner. At a regular or special board meeting, the proposed new or amended policy shall be presented in writing for reading and discussion. Oh, good lord, that means now we have to read it out loud. I don't like that. The final vote for adoption shall take place not earlier than at the second reading of the particular policy. Although approval of a new or amended policy requires a minimum of two readings, temporary, temporary approval may be granted by the board in lieu of formal policy to meet emergency conditions or special events which will take place before formal action can be taken. Alright, so.
I feel like you made a good point earlier in asking a question of.
I'm listening.
Is this something that Rusty needs to be a part of the conversation about since we're?
Yeah.
I don't want to have two separate, albeit parallel, but two separate conversations about.
The same thing.
Yeah, the route of policy.
Right.
Because it seems like in thirteen-hundred, the way that it's written, you know, I mean, I think that our, you know, what Rusty's proposing and what we're actually doing right now fits into that. Other than the two readings, that's the only thing that I don't think we're doing currently, but. Yeah, interesting.
And in my exploring of it all, I didn't see anything that states that it's a law for it to go in the front of the board twice prior.
Yeah, I don't think it is.
It's just our kind of.
That's what we've done.
What we've done.
Yeah, so I'm gonna.
Do we do two readings right now?
No, we did, but we, okay, so what happened was we did, because we were running two board meetings a month.
Right.
Then when we went to one board meeting a month, that's like a whole two months before anything. And because we were sending it out for feedback and because we were providing the feedback to the trustees and they had all the information there and because the committee at times was quite voluminous with bodies.
Yeah.
Sometimes not, um, there was a due diligence on content.
Yeah, the, the committee, the policy committee almost is like the first reading.
Correct, correct. So I, I think, yeah, let's.
Well, now we're back to two board meetings.
We are, which I don't necessarily think it means that we have to go through the whole, especially if there is a more fluid approach to policy revision. That may happen to override having to.
Sure.
So, okay.
If, if thoughtful and thorough feedback is given in a different way, is what I'm hearing from you. If we can ensure that that's happening.
Absolutely, right, so. All new or, so what I'm doing, let's just highlight the sections that I think Rusty can give some insight to what he'd like to see within the policy. So all newer amended policy shall become effective upon adoption unless a specific effective date. Okay, that's fine. Policies as adopted or amended shall be made a part of the minutes of the meeting at which action was taken and shall also be included in the district's policy manual. Policies of the districts of the district shall be reviewed annually by the board. See, that's.
That's a lot.
Well, but that's the reality because that is actually in law, that we are supposed to review all the policies annually. So that's why it would be advantageous, I mean, once we clean up the stragglers from nineteen ninety-seven, two thousand and seven, and all of that good fun stuff, that we can just get on a sequential system so that we are reviewing everything annually and, you know, not, the annual policies that have to be reviewed for the upcoming school year should hit the board like June so that everything's already taken care of. Um, but then everything else can just come in blocks of whatever it needs to come in.
Sure.
And, excuse me, in my opinion, but I don't know, so.
By, by saying policies of the district shall be reviewed annually by the board, do you take that to mean every single policy? And I guess the reason.
That's what it says.
The reason, you're right, yeah, the reason why I asked that question though is because it also seems like there's either other policy or code that specifies certain policies are annual.
That is correct.
And so that's just additional notification. I guess to me that seems kind of funny, that there are some policies that's, that specific are specifically say, review this annually under the umbrella of, well, all policies should be reviewed annually.
Well, but there are specifics that I think are specific to the new year. So like things, um, like the dress code policy, we're supposed to, we're required to review annually.
Sure.
Uh, we didn't, so, you know, something for that one. But it's that sort of stuff. I mean, I think those that require, I think following this, if Rusty stays on board with, okay, yep, they have to review the dress code annually, so I think in April I should send this out to all my buildings and say, hey, review this, it's got to be reviewed. And, you know, so getting everybody on board with the fact that we actually should be operating and running by policy. That will be significantly helpful. Because the last time it was reviewed, everybody weighed in, administrators, et cetera, we implemented it and then it was like, what are you doing? So.
Uh, I have a calendar that I am working on so that we can follow that and kind of pop them in there.
Okay.
If that makes sense, that way we're not missing any and making sure that the annual ones are getting done, but we're also getting through them.
Kevin is systematic way of approaching it. And, and don't get me wrong, I'm not against reviewing policies annually at all. That's, I mean, that, to me, that seems prudent. Um, I just am trying to think practically.
No, I, I hear you because when we, we still.
Right.
Six years and haven't gotten through every single policy. On top of the fact that, you know, in COVID, we had to introduce a whole bunch of policies that were specific to COVID. So then we had to take all of those out and then there were a, a plethora of policies in the financial industry that we did not have, that we had tasked the CFO at that time saying, you need to review these, get them to us, we've got to get them implemented, and it fell on deaf ears. So I'm very grateful that Jessica is like, gotta have them. It's like, bring it, because that's really her wheelhouse and none of us.
She needs to be the expert there.
She does, exactly, so. Um, alright, so we'll just highlight that.
Perfect.
Um, in cases where action must be taken before the next board meeting and where the board has provided no policies or guidance for administrative actions, the superintendent shall have the power to act. What does that mean? Where action must be taken before the next board meeting. On what? A policy that doesn't exist?
Uh, more like an unprecedented type of situation.
Yeah, I, I, that's how I read it too, Sierra. I think um, to go back to dress code, say there's something that's not addressed in the dress code policy that we wrote and there's obviously a problem that's causing a disruption at one of our schools. We can't, we can't in that moment revise the dress code policy.
Correct.
This is a lame example.
No, no, it's not. It's not lame. I'm following you.
You know, that's why I read it, is that the administrator or the superintendent would have permission to take administrative action there to determine what needs to be done in the meantime.
I think it was not that it was lame, it was because I was imagining what kids could come up with to make dress code disruptive and.
I, I hear you laughing at me, Sierra.
Yeah, I went, like, my brain went to toupees. I don't know why, but yeah, that could be a new thing.
That would do it.
It's unprecedented.
So, and I'm thinking of purely operational stuff. Not necessarily trying to predict what a policy will be, but just if something needs to be done for the safe or sound operation of a school, I would think we would expect the superintendent to do that.
Alright, so where the, the board has provided no policies or guides. Should be guidelines. For administrative actions. For administrative actions. And in cases where action must be taken before the next board meeting. Superintendent shall have power to act. I didn't like the way it was worded.
Oh, fair.
First and foremost, secondly, um, because this is. My struggle is is saying in the absence of policy, so we're talking about taking actions, but we're not saying. It's actions related to ineffective or non-existent policies. That's where I'm like, okay, the board has provided no policies. Or guidelines for administrative actions. Within a policy, although not going singular case.
Help me understand how that helps clarify.
Because, okay, the first paragraph, in cases where action must be taken before the next board meeting. And where, so there's, there's two caveats there.
Yep.
Okay, so there has to be no policies or guidelines for administrative action.
Right.
But we have to take action.
Before.
Before the next board meeting, so the superintendent has the power to act.
Right.
But act on what? And I get it, you're saying dress code, well, we have a dress code, so we have the policy, so he can act. Maybe it's not addressed in the policy, but I'm sure a crafty parent could figure out a way that it is or isn't. You know what I'm saying?
Sure.
So.
Yeah, and, yeah, you know, and I think maybe, um. Goodness, maybe, maybe like an open enrollment decision might be a better example, like maybe, oh, so. So right now, until this is approved, we have policies that contradict each other.
Right.
We have twenty-two forty and thirty-ten, the superintendent made some decisions.
Right.
Operationally that were necessary, that chose one policy over another because they, they were contradictory.
Okay.
And so in my mind, I think that's. What this is saying, now that I say that out loud, you don't disagree with that though, you're just fine tuning the language?
Correct.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, 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 no, I'm not, yeah, I'm just. Because I, I fear there are some people out there like me that are like, but that's not what it says.
Okay, gotcha.
I don't know how to read it, see, I struggle when people are saying, but that's what it, that's what it means. Because from my background, that's what I expect it to mean, cause I'm in the system.
Gotcha.
You got a parent that reads this and they're like, huh?
What are you talking about?
Exactly.
Yeah.
So adding more language for clarification so that, um. When the board has provided no policies or guidelines for administrative actions within policies. And when action must be taken before the next board meeting.
Alright, I'm, I'm with you now, I'm just slowing you down, Michelle.
No, you're not, no, I get what you're saying, um, and when action must be taken before, uh. See, I don't understand this before the next board meeting, um, because. It wasn't brought to us, to the next board meeting, do you see what I'm saying? So I'm wondering if this needs to be struck.
Yeah, I, yeah, I agree and it's not because, like in this case, it's not because we're not bringing it to you at the board meeting. It's because we have a different channel that we've created to bring it to your attention.
Correct.
Yeah.
Um, the superintendent shall have the power to act.
Great.
Uh, let's go here. And when action must be taken, comma. Superintendent has, shall have the power to act, okay. The superintendent's decisions however shall be subject to review by action of the board at its next regular meeting. In addition, it shall be a due duty of the superintendent to inform the board of such action and the need for policy. So he has to tell on himself. Silly. Um, I get it, but it's still silly.
Yeah, it is kind of, it's funny how that is written out.
Yeah.
Because I think, I think actually the class size example is perfect of how this worked.
Yeah, exactly.
We made a decision, we did what was operationally necessary. And immediately said, hey, policy committee, we've got, uh, we've got some inconsistency, can we address that? But none of it went to a regular board meeting.
Can I add that? Because I liked what you just said.
Great, yeah.
Um, because he's not just out there really nearly making policy, he's. Managing the operational effectiveness of the district.
Yes.
So even if it comes down to a dress code issue.
Right.
He can support a principle or a rule that's a principle and then bring it to the board and say, fix this.
Yep.
Okay, alright.
I like that addition and that, to me, that actually provides a lot of clarity about what this is even talking about.
Good, good. Oh, she'll have two power, oh, that's why it's got there, the power. Took me a minute.
Sorry, it's after six P M, we're all there.
Yeah, superintendent's decisions, um, shall be subject to review. By action of the board at its next regular meeting.
Can we just say reviewed by the board? To me, whenever we have the word action, oh, sorry, sorry.
Just start kicking.
Um, to me, whenever we say action of the board, it implies that some action.
Yeah, we're voting on something.
When really this might just be a superintendent update or a discussion item or.
Right, um.
Could be an action item, but.
I think this. Should go there. So he has the power to act and then it's his duty to inform the board of actions taken and the need for policy. If that's the case, um, and the superintendent's decisions shall be subject to review. Shall be. I guess, subject to review by the board at its next regular meeting.
Does the last sentence, the superintendent's decisions make sense at the end of the previous paragraph? Right after the superintendent shall have the power to act? It, ul- ultimately, it doesn't matter.
No, no, I, I like what you're saying, cause, yeah, I, one and two sentence paragraphs drive me nuts, um.
Cause it seems like if you, if you put the superintendent's decisions however shall be subject to review. Et cetera, at the end of the previous paragraph, then you could make it all one paragraph and it would flow logically.
Okay.
Without, without it being two, two sentence paragraphs.
Back, 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 oops, go forward, okay. So where the board has provided no policies or guidelines for administrative actions within policies. And when action must be taken for the effective operation of the district, the superintendent shall have the power to act. Superintendent's decisions shall be subject to review by the board at its next regular meeting. It shall be the duty of the superintendent to inform the board of actions taken and the need for policy. Okay.
I think it makes sense.
It does make sense, I don't like to flow it off, but that's a meeting, um, cause he's got the right to act.
Well, yeah, let's fix the flow then.
See, I think, I still think this. Should be the last sentence. Okay, so when action must be taken for the effective operation of the district, the superintendent shall have the power to act. It shall be the duty of the superintendent to inform the board of actions taken and the need for policy. The superintendent's decisions, um, okay, maybe that's.
Yeah, you know what, Michelle, that, I think that flows, I think that flows.
Okay, this shall be subject to review by the board at its next regular meeting. But see, here we're calling it decisions and everywhere else it's actions, um.
Yeah, it could be actions.
Change that to actions. Suspension of policies, under circumstances which require a waiver of a policy, the policy may be suspended by a majority vote of the members present. Members, would that be the trustees, what are we saying? Uh, in order to suspend a policy, all trustees must have written notice of the meeting which included a proposal to suspend the policies. With an explanation of the purpose of such proposed suspension, in such a proposal. If such a proposal is not made in writing in advance of the meeting, the policies may only be suspended by unanimous. Unanimous vote of all trustees, I don't understand this, um, let me see, when was?
I'm not sure of any, uh, situation where that would be necessary.
Okay, so it was twenty thirteen, I, yeah, I don't know that we would. I'm just trying to think, cause I know, um. The only time policies have ever been suspended was when we had to write the COVID policies that overrode the policies.
We're acknowledging that this new policy contradicts.
Right. But. I just, I don't see, I, I don't know who these members are. That doesn't make any sense to me.
Well, I mean, it seems to clarify, and I agree with you, it needs, it, the language needs to be changed, but. In the second sentence, in order to suspend a policy, all trustees must have received, to me, that implies that members are trustees.
Well, written notice of the meeting, what meeting, it's not a board meeting, so is it like, um. The long range planning committee getting together and deciding that we need to suspend. A policy reflective of, uh, of zoning.
Hmm.
And so they vote and they decide it's being, uh. Uh, but all the trustees receive an email that says, oh, hey, we're having a meeting of the long range planning committee on this date. And we're gonna talk about this and we might suspend it, is that what it's saying? Because I don't like this language.
Only with a majority vote of the members present.
Right, the members of a specific committee, specific to, I mean, there's a, I think to me, there's, there's a lot of. Missing information.
Well, and based on your, your example a minute ago, I interpret that as trustees because of my experience, but you're right. If you're a member of the long range planning committee, you're a member.
Right, or even policy committee, I mean, if.
Oh, yeah, that's fair too.
You know, we could decide, look, we don't wanna have this policy anymore, but the thing is, is like, we, I, I don't know. I, I don't think that. It's not made in writing in advance of a meeting, the policy may be suspended by, of the trustees present. So, because I'm the only trustee here, I can say yay, we're not, we're gonna suspend this.
Get written notice ahead of time, give the other trustees a chance to show.
I don't like the fact that, I mean, I would think, in all fairness, go with me here. Um. I don't like this. I think.
What were you gonna say in all fairness?
Well, I was thinking it was, it should fall under here, but this is absence of policy, this is having a policy and wanting it to go away. So I would think that if we need a paragraph about how to suspend policies. It would have to go through the direction of, I, I don't think any committee could do anything, I seriously think it has to be through the superintendent.
One hundred percent.
Um, with the intention that, I don't think he should. I don't think the superintendent should have the authority to suspend any policy. I think he has the authority to bring the policy to the board for suspension.
He can call.
Based on, exactly.
Yeah.
He can request a meeting and we can have powwow over it, um. I don't like that paragraph at all, I, I just think that because we're such a small district and, which, we're not, but we are. Um.
I agree, yeah.
I, I, this language has to have been from I S P A, um, so. I really think that, um, if there are any policies that need to be suspended, um. So let's, let's walk me through this, okay.
So, we're, okay. So you, so just like the paragraph above, we wanna just, any suspension of policies are gonna come to the board at the next. Regular board meeting.
Mm-hmm.
We're not gonna do the hoopla over notifying everybody and getting a majority of who's present and, I like it.
So.
Simple and clear.
Yeah, so Randy's gonna be notified of the need. He's not necessarily taking action, he's notifying the board of any immediate need. To which would either require an emergency meeting or a special board meeting.
Right.
Or at the, okay, so.
And there's other policy that would provide direction for those things.
Correct.
Right.
I'm gonna say schedule the board meeting, cause that would cover emergencies, special or regular. I'm going to say scheduled board meeting, because that would cover emergency, special or regular. Does that seem?
Would be scheduled if he needed to call a meeting that wasn't on the calendar already?
That would have to be scheduled as an emergency. There's, there's specific criteria to call an emergency. And then, um, because an emergency could happen that day.
Right.
But, uh, special needs twenty-four hour notice and the regular requires forty-eight.
Got it.
So we can't just be running around holding meetings because we won't.
Gotcha, okay.
So an emergency board meeting would be scheduled, but it could be scheduled that day.
Very short notice.
Correct.
I got you.
Correct.
Okay.
All right, yeah, I don't like this one at all. And you know what? I don't like their language, so, um. So this, if, calling it suspension, so if a circumstance requires a policy to be suspended. The superintendent shall be notified of the needed suspension. The superintendent shall notify the board of the immediate action needed.
The suspension of policy.
Uh, okay, so shall notify the board of. The need for a policy suspension. So if a circumstance requires a policy to be suspended, the superintendent shall be notified of the needed. Uh, that just seems lame. So if a circum- stance requires a policy to be suspended, the superintendent shall be notified. The superintendent. Shall then notify the board of the need for a policy suspension. The suspension will be addressed at the next scheduled board meeting. So he's not taking action on it. He's calling the board, saying, have a situation, it needs to be addressed, which would then, um.
His sandbox will be to determine, is this an emergency, is this a special, or can this wait till the next regular board meeting?
Right.
Yeah.
So, um, and the board may weigh in and say, no, go back to this other funky paragraph. Or give them more authority, I don't know.
Right.
But, um, okay. So, uh, the superintendent shall develop and maintain a current policy manual which contains the policies of the district. Each administrator as well as staff, students and other residents shall have ready access to this manual. All policy manuals distributed to anyone shall remain the property of the district and shall be subject to recall at any time. In addition. Manuels may be developed and disseminated in an electronic format, including CD and web access.
I wonder when this was written.
I'm surprised it doesn't say cassette.
Doesn't say what?
Cassette tape or copy disc.
So I, so here's my clarifying question, our, our, is the board. Is it still the board's desire that we have physical printed manuals or?
Absolutely. Um, and I, we don't need manuals, we need one.
Got it.
And it should be in her office.
Right.
Because sometimes people will come in and they'll be like, I want your policy manual. And then she's going to bring out this four inch binder, sisters of policies. So, you know, they can have a copy of whatever, um, if it becomes.
It's actual law as well that we have to have.
Yeah.
Oh, a printed copy.
It is, yeah.
Well, fair enough.
That's why there's like eight of those in my office.
Okay, and you update them all?
No, no, those are all just ones that have been like from previous.
Through the history.
Through the history.
Okay.
So it's, it's always been on the burden of the clerk, so the board clerk shall develop and maintain. A current policy manual which contains the policies of the district. So everybody has ready access to the manual, um. But yeah, I know we only have one. I don't know if any of the schools have created their own policy manuals, but, um.
It, I mean, it's always just been much more efficient and accurate to look at the.
Website.
Website.
So all policy manuals distributed to anyone shall remain property of the district and shall be subject to recall at any time.
So I guess I'm thinking manuals may be developed and disseminated in.
Go ahead.
Uh, in electronic format, including web access.
There we go.
Then, then we would be. Keeping our manual basically just electronically.
Okay, so what did you say? I heard it and it was great, but I don't remember it.
That, that's okay, I'm happy to say it again. So the last sentence there, um. Manuels may be developed and disseminated in electronic format, including CD and web access. To me, that's the, that's the spirit of the law that says like, you, you can keep this on your website. That might be the most efficient, effective. Accurate way of keeping this record.
It is, um, but in record retention, it does require at least one physical copy.
Sure, sure. Have one of those finders that you physically have to print out a policy every time it's updated.
So.
It's massive.
All right, the board clerk shall develop and maintain a current policy manual which contains the policies of the district. Each administrator as well as staff, students and other residents shall have access. That seems silly. Uh, to, uh, the manual.
I feel like all policy manuals distributed, that sentence could be removed. Because we're, I mean, because we're pretty much keeping just the one. Sure, that's, yeah, that's a fair way to look.
Okay, so then, um, all policies, so let's see if this reads best. Um, the board clerk shall develop and maintain a current policy manual which contains the district, oh, good lord. Which contains the policies of the district. Each administrator as well as staff, students and other residents shall have access to the manual. Any additional policy manuals created shall remain the property of the district and shall be subject to recall at any time. All policies shall be accessible in electronic format. On the district website. Okay, I, I think that might help, so then, okey doke.
Oh, man.
So then Rusty just needs to weigh in on all of this, yeah.
Yeah.
So this policy should go to Rusty. And then he can decide, well, then it should come back to policy committee so we can see what he says.
Yeah.
All right, so that's plus, um. Okay, so we did, that one, we're done. Oh, the hiring practices, okay, we got. Let's see, there's that. Oh, I already had it up there, okay, make it go away. Okay. Where's that thingies?
Hmm, you don't have editing access.
Yeah, I should be able to make it smaller.
So there's no toolbar.
Oh, are you kidding?
I am not kidding.
Well, that sucks.
You could always co- uh, control minus.
True. Nope, I, maybe I will just keep doing this and see what happens.
So, Sarah, help me understand the two things we're looking at. The one on the left is what's current?
Yes.
And then the one on the right is what?
Is suggested by Rusty.
And it's not an edited because it's a total rewrite? Is that what I'm, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm going to read through ours, um. Which I think he probably has a lot of good information. Which. Okay, because see, the, the whole procedures bit needs to come out. That's the thing. Our policies are policies. Um, there might be guidance on procedures, but typically there's a comment that says, you know, superintendent.
Direct the creation of.
Correct, procedures or protocols or whatever we want to call it. Um, which we do have a hiring, um, for volunteers, a whole procedure. So we could have a fifty-one hundred P. Um, which, uh, is good. But the problem is, is, we're not going to get through this in fifteen minutes for one, and for two, um. What, uh, the reason this is coming up to the board meeting is because the admin handbook and the policy don't. They're not mirroring each other. There's a supposedly a conflict. So, um. If we all want to go with what's in the admin handbook, then we need to change the policy. If we want to adhere to the policy, then we got to change that admin handbook.
Right, what's the conflict?
Um.
And I know that we just revised some of the things in the admin handbook, but I guess I didn't realize that it was because there was a conflict.
Well, within the policy, um, it basically states that we will always hire the most qualified and best fit for the position. Because we will have advertised it and because we will solicit for, it's not just.
So the in building.
Correct.
Okay.
So that's where it's, it's, um. Sticky.
Yep.
To where if we're going to allow that, that needs to be in policy. Or we need to change the admin handbook to reflect what policy is, because I think it should maintain, it should remain standard. That if it's our policy to open the positions up and hire, then we need to do that. If it's not, then we need to put a little caveat in the policy that says, oh, by the way, we also.
Condition where there's such an emergency.
Correct.
Just.
Correct. And when it's an emergency situation, I think there needs to be language that states it's an interim position. So that you're meeting a need and yet we're still going to go through the correct processes. And maybe that interim position, person is the one that gets the position, but we're showing. The community, we're following and we're sticking to our words.
Is. Would it, would it benefit us to wait on fifty-one hundred until we have that conversation on Wednesday with the board about.
Yeah.
Our changes to the admin handbook?
Yeah, I'm sure, because I'm not sure if that's.
Because I, I, I think that we might have resolved that issue just with the changes that Rusty Brogan I made.
Well, and even still, if the protocol procedures don't align with the language that's in the policy. Then we need to correct.
One or one of them, yes.
Correct.
Agreed.
Because it's, it's not, um, it's not fun getting frustrated. Uh, people or we've, I know we've tried, I've tried. For several years, as have other trustees to stay, you know, we need to change the reputation that if you're not with the in crowd, you're not going anywhere in Lakeland. Because that is the perspective and it's not a healthy one.
I see.
Okay, so, and yet we have policy that doesn't support that, but that's what we're doing, you know? So it's one of those things where it's like, okay, we all need to get on the right page. To number one, change that perspective, because that's not a good perspective to have. Um, because some people just. You know, they, they won't apply because they know they're not going to get it, because they're not going through the normal procedures and they're not the buddy and all that sort of stuff. So. I think if we're going to create this culture where everybody can thrive as an employee of the district. Because we're fair, we're equitable, we're honest, we, we, we do what we say we're going to do. I think you'd find we'd have that much more dynamic, uh, employment than we currently have.
Yeah, yeah, I don't disagree with that at all. I think, yeah, I mean, the changes that we made, I think were. Uh, necessary and good and productive and.
Good.
Yeah, I, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we will look at that one. Come back, come back to normal size, please. Um, equal education, nondiscriminant discrimination and sex equity. Sex equity, okey doke. Um, let's see here.
Oh, um.
This one we might be able to do in twelve minutes.
No. Um, that one I need. Jessica was going to send me a thing, so this one got brought up, um, in the audit, um, just because we're missing. Just a sentence needs changed.
There's a specific clause that she was going to put into this policy to make it compliant with the law.
Yes.
So, Sarah, you're saying that in this, this one that says draft doesn't have that additional clause?
No, no, it does not.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry, that is my bad. I forgot to grab that from her.
It's okay, I'm not trying to call you out on it, I just wanted to clarify.
No, 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 I just, yeah, okay, my bad.
Well, then if that's the case, we will go ahead, um, because there's no more policies on the agenda. We'll go ahead and end policy committee and go, oh, well, some people can, I can't.